Is Pete going to be with us tonight?
I haven't heard from Counselor Soto. Give me just a moment, everyone. In the event that Pete is unable to join us this evening, Counselor Diaz, would you be willing to chair the Public Works Committee in his absence? I can't, I can't hear you, Janet, you're muted.
Sure, what do we bring you forward? Is that, oh, Resolution 2821?
Yep, just the Greenways Trails and Rec Grant.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Ms. Strazo, just keep an eye out for Counselor Soto. We're going to go ahead and get started. Yep.
Hold there.
Great, I appreciate it very much. Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 3, 2021 meeting of council committees. We'll begin with the roll call of members. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. PK.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Here.
Mr. Soto. And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here. Counselor Soto is excused until his arrival. All right, we have the April 5, 2021 committee meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Excited.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any council comments on the meeting? On the minutes, I'm sorry. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. PK.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. We're going to begin this evening with the committee of the whole. We have two resolutions that we'll want to address that I think council will agree are very important. We're going to begin with Council Resolution Number 25, 2021, Supporting Fair Public School Funding in Pennsylvania. Mr. Harris, would you read the title?
Generally, we don't at committee meetings.
You're right. You are correct. Great. Has, has council had a chance to read the resolution? Okay, can I hear a motion in that case?
No, moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the resolution. Counselor Diaz, I believe you first brought this to my attention.
Yes. I would like to have, I think there is probably a few people waiting to speak, and it is regarding the Fair Funding Formula, which is Act 35 of 2016, and basically is for education funding equitable for all of Pennsylvania's school districts. And as we know, we have been fighting this for a pretty long time. And I do believe that we need to pursue by fighting and bringing it forward and sending it to, you know, the governor to take a look at this. And hopefully, with everybody advocating for it, that our children have the proper and education that they need in order to pursue a good future. So with that said.
Excellent. Was it members of Power Interfaith?
Yes.
I see, I believe Reverend Gerald Simmons. If you are a member of Power Interfaith here to address this resolution, would you hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen? I see Beth Reeves. Yep. Go ahead and add them to the meeting.
Yep. Beth, would you like to address the city council? Is that okay, President Wadeell?
That is Counselor Diaz. Good evening, Beth. How are you?
I am fine. I thank you for the opportunity to encourage you to pass this resolution. My name is Beth Reeves. My children both attended SDOL schools and graduated from McCaskey. And we were grateful for the excellent teachers, staff, and students, and grateful that they could attend those schools. I'm speaking today for several reasons. As a parent, I realized that my children needed smaller classes and more teachers in elementary. In middle and high school, they needed more varied course options, guidance counselors, librarians, and other specialized teachers. As a school-based occupational therapist, I traveled around the county, saw lots of different schools, and it was obvious the difference. The most obvious, obviously, was the expansive athletic fields and luxurious buildings that we didn't have. But if you look closer, there was also academic offerings that we didn't have. As a taxpayer, I know that the millage rate for SDOL residents is much higher. As a member of Power, I know that the fifth, that one-fifth of the districts that have the lowest percentage of white students has over $2,000 per student, more than the Fair Funding Formula would say. And the districts that have the least percentage of white students has over $2,000 on the average per student, less than the Fair Funding Formulas would say that they have. So we are running two school systems, one for white and affluent students, and one for poor and brown and black students. As a citizen, this is not the world I want. This is not the community I want. We need to develop the potential of all our students. We need to close the opportunity debt. I hope you'll pass this resolution of support and provide an increase in the budget, as the governor's proposal has said, as well as close to 100% fair funding, as well as an adjustment to make sure that no district is negatively affected. And if there are questions, we can answer them later. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Would other, would other members like to speak? Reverend Simmons?
Yes, thank you, President Smith-Wadeell, and members of council. I come to as a, excuse me, my wife is out of town. She's calling me from the hinterlands of northern Pennsylvania. I have to get back to her. I hope she'll excuse me. But I'm, I'm here today to express my sincere concern. I've been fighting for improved and fair distribution of academic resources for 20 years. We began with Good Schools PA. Does anybody remember that? And, and still, the fight goes on. Politicians have taken the position that the course of least resistance is one they want to follow. The status quo is good for them. You know, black and brown people are coming to realize the power that they have in this system to vote, but are not encouraged, as we see across the nation, a repressive and suppression in voter access. But to bring it home, David Mazinkas has listed Pennsylvania as one of the worst states. We are at the very bottom in terms of fair funding in all of the nation. I originally hail from Michigan and had a different school funding system there. Not to say it was ideal, but it was better than what we have here. And, and so to be listed in the bottom of the, of the rankings for fairness is not what any of us, I believe, as Pennsylvanians, want to see. The politicians want to make everybody happy. They say that they want to offer the Fair Funding Formula, yet they only want to make it for new money. So the lion's share of the money, 90% of the money is being spent on education, is going to be spent in the same unfair way that it's being spent today. I support and power supports the governor's plan to create $1.3 billion new education funding to divide the $6.4 billion education budget through the Fair Funding Formula, all of it. It's, it's like saying, you know, I've eaten your lunch for the last year. You know, I won't eat it today and everything will be okay. Racism is baked in in America. We all know that, if we're looking with any intelligent eye. And it's time to redress these grievances, not begin to start anew as if they never existed. So that is, is the end of my comments. I hope that the council will be another strong voice in advocating for fairness, not incremental, but fairness we should have had decades ago. Can't be waited for any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Simmons. Excellent. I agree wholeheartedly, and I believe council does as well. Do any other, would any other members of Power Interfaith like to address the item before Council Committee of the Whole?
I think Reverend Brown's.
That's correct. Hi, I'd be happy to speak. I'm Reverend Andrea Brown, lead pastor at Grandview Church, which is part of Power Lancaster County. And I want to thank Mayor Sarace for appearing and speaking very passionately at our recent gathering. Like her, I'm a very proud SDOL parent. My kids graduated from Wharton, Reynolds, and McCaskey. One of my favorite nights during any given school year was back-to-school night, in which teachers displayed an astonishing level of commitment to their work. Some would even hand out their personal phone numbers. So dedicated were they to their students' success. You know, likewise, commencement ceremony was multiple degrees more inspiring than the same ceremony in the wealthier, whiter suburb in which I grew up. A student shared the ways that they overcame often incredible adversity, much of it caused by American racism. And the district itself, as well as those amazing students and their parents, does deserve credit for the ways it contributes to student success. It does so, you know, with, it does a great deal with a little. It does more than it should have to, and sometimes it takes shortcuts. After all, it is getting $19 million less per year than it should. Before I was a pastor, I was a substitute teacher in the district. On January 10, I taught at Lincoln Middle School. We had no heat, zero. It was just brutally cold. Solutions that would have worked in other districts where I also subbed, say, lots of space heaters, were not feasible because the school's electrical system couldn't handle that. So the recent school renovations cheer me, but I know that local taxpayers pay a larger share than they should have to of this. The state should be bearing more of the cost. A more recent example, a close friend of one of my kids qualified for a National Merit Scholarship, but because the guidance counselor almost didn't get the school's part of the paperwork done on time, she almost didn't receive it. And this was a good, hard-working guidance counselor. He, like others at McCaskey, just had a larger caseload than any human being can, could possibly handle. Meanwhile, there were other students, including English language learners and students whose parents needed to work two jobs, who would have benefited from far more help had the counseling and college press staff been double or triple the size that it was. I saw students in the district who were harmed because there weren't enough adults paying attention to them. I saw my kids' classrooms constantly short on critical supplies. Student works, students worked without things that their peers in better-funded districts took for granted. My child, as a 17-year-old senior, was sometimes asked to act as a substitute teacher when the district didn't have enough to go around. So yes, I can absolutely imagine hundreds of ways the district could make use of $19 million more a year, but that isn't even the point. This isn't about more funding. It is about our city's kids getting their fair share. It is wrong that black and brown students, as well as poor white students and newly-immigrated Asian students, are not getting what the state, in a bipartisan effort, by the way, agreed, is their fair share. It's wrong, and it causes the racial wealth gap to persist, and even worse, to be multiplied generation after generation. Educational funding inequity contribute to the problem of mass incarceration, to unemployment, to eviction. It can give wealthier, whiter parents undue influence in a school system like SDOL. And we're all the poorer for that. We are all missing out when potential is left unfulfilled and when students get, don't get the education that they deserve. It's just wrong. I speak tonight in honor of Buddy Glover and Professor Hazel Jackson, two educators I knew personally whom I miss very much. I saw the lengths each went for this, went to for this city's kids, even as they experienced racist discrimination themselves. This resolution is one small gesture the city can make in response, one small way of trying to get the state to do simply what it knows it ought to. I hope you'll bring this resolution to council on May 11, pass it unanimously, and show up in person to make sure that the legislator does the right thing at long last.
Thank you, Andrea.
So I guess I'm going to keep preaching to the choir here. Jennifer Mattson, I'm the pastor of St. Thomas Episcopal Church in Lancaster. And I am also a proud mother of two children who are in the James Buchanan Elementary School. And I got to tell you, a couple of years ago, when we had a hot spell, I got a phone call saying I had to come pick up my kids because they didn't have enough air conditioning to, to keep the school running. And I'm a pastor, so I've got a flexible schedule. I was able to get there. But what about parents who, you know, they don't have a flexible schedule, maybe, and they've got a kid in kindergarten? What are they going to do? What kind of decision do you have to make in that, in that instance? We can and we need to do better for our children. The teachers have been amazing, what they do on a shoestring budget. And I've also got a teacher at St. Thomas, and she has to buy stuff of her own resources, and not just like the extras, but some of the basic stuff to be able to do her job well, to promote learning excellence. That's unacceptable. Clearly, this education system is both separate and unequal. School districts with a more diverse student body, which is wonderful, are receiving less funding per student. It's a moral and spiritual failure. It's, it's racism, pure and simple. Whiter school districts are benefiting from greater resources, and the numbers are what the numbers are. But this does not mean that we need to accept them. The previous Fair Funding Formula was supposed to address these issues, but it did not go far enough. It only applied to new money coming in, which is a small fraction of the budget. It's about 11% of new money that goes towards fair funding. And, you know, for those who say that we should ease in and gradually increase over time, I don't want to have to wait for a gradual increase over time. My children will have graduated before that has any benefit for them, and no child should have to wait. No child should have to wait for us to have the will to do the right thing. We have waited long enough. They have waited now and love. And so we empower, asking that the city council support Governor Tom Wolf's fair funding plan, that we would be able to end this education apartheid by dividing the basic education budget according to the just requirements of Pennsylvania's Fair Funding Formula. This plan would give massive and significant relief to the school district of Lancaster and to other school districts who have not received their fair share for generations. Can you imagine that? Generations of children. I think the governor's plan is a win-win approach. It's common sense, and, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do. Every student should have the same opportunity to learn. Every student should be treated with dignity and respect. My children, your children, every child deserves this. So I hope that you will join us in supporting this, this effort.
Thank you all. Other council comments on the matter? Sorry, my internet's coming in a little slow. Are there other comments from the public? Please add Mr. Dastre to the meeting.
Hello. Tony Dastre, 700 Block and New Holland Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's doing this and fighting for this right now. As someone who graduated, it's getting longer and longer, making me feel older and older, for class of 2014. It wasn't until I went to my first college that I really began to understand how diverse our community was, because I ended up at a college that was half the size of McCaskey and primarily full of white children like me. It was eye-opening, and looking back, it's amazing to know how resilient and how much we work together as a community, the school district of Lancaster being, you know, the city and Lancaster Township. So I just want to reiterate how thankful I am to everyone who's putting this forward right now because I know that going through school, there were certain opportunities that had we not been a cooperative community and had we not had strategies in place, I, I wouldn't have had those opportunities, and other students also wouldn't have had those opportunities. I'm very fortunate and glad to be a product of McCaskey, and thank you for putting this forward.
Thank you, Tony. All right. Well, in that case, I don't anticipate any surprises, but we have a motion and a second. Mr. Harris.
And this would move it to the regular meeting on the 11th. Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. PK.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Big thank you to the members of, to the members of Power Interfaith. We will be voting on this resolution at next Tuesday's meeting of council. And while we have everyone's attention on the matter, I'll just let all the assembled public know that there is a rally for Pennsylvania Public Schools taking place on Saturday, May 15, at, at 10:00 a.m. So, and I think it's actually, the event is called Just That on, on Facebook, if you'd like to attend or get engaged. Thank you all once again, and thank you to Counselor Diaz for bringing this important item forward. We look forward to voting on it next week. All right. I believe that brings us to, I've lost my agenda. Pardon me just a second.
Council Resolution 26, Regarding Asian-American Discrimination and Violence.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Can I hear a motion?
Motion to move forward to the May 11 meeting.
Thank you, Counselor PK. Do I have a second? Thank you, Counselor. Again, I believe it was you, Counselor Diaz, who brought this important resolution forward. I think we have a couple of folks here to, to address this item. Please, Counselor Diaz.
Yes, I would like to first just say a couple of words. I'd like to revisit history and honor all the Asian-American veterans who have fought for our country under the United States military. We must also acknowledge the challenges and the discrimination that many have faced, especially over the past year. In the aftermath of the recent increase of hate crimes, bias, incidents against Asian-American and Pacific Islanders, many communities are showing their support in various ways, from social media, activism, and multitude of efforts. And I think that this resolution is an effort to start and heighten awareness surrounding the race against, the racism against Asian-Americans, which can be engraved and raging in racially intensive incidents, physically and also emotionally. At this time, because it was fueled over the past year of the pandemic, which everyone is referring to as COVID, the Chinese virus, I am very strongly fighting for our Asian-Americans that this resolution and all across the nation know that we are against all the violence that has occurred. Now, it is my honor to have Representative Patty Kim to speak on this resolution. So if Amber can let her in.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for allowing me to speak just for a few minutes for tonight. I do want to sincerely thank Counselor Diaz for bringing this important resolution. I have a good feeling this is not controversial within this Lancaster City Council, and I'm grateful for that. As we mentioned, this will condemn the discrimination and violence in your great city of Lancaster during a time of fear and uneasiness for a lot of Asian-Americans across the Commonwealth. This type of resolution, though I know doesn't have a lot of teeth in it, but just the gesture of standing in solidarity with Asian-Americans means a lot, especially with elected officials. So I want to thank you for bringing this resolution forward. Also, May is Asian-American Heritage Month, and as we celebrate all the contributions that Asian-Americans have contributed, from, you know, Lancaster's hospital to the entertainment industry, we have to pause and remember that a lot of Asian-Americans are going through some difficult times, as all minority groups are. And if I could just talk to the Asian-Americans in your city, I, I read that it's, there's only 4.5% Asian-Americans there. But, you know, we're, we're the target, and we're just in the line of, you know, passing baton of pain to one another. And I just hope that we Asian-Americans will build our empathy for other groups and to stand when others hurt, and that we run towards the pain when there's anti-immigration issues, Black Lives Matter issues, antisemitism. The list goes on and on and on, and this is a time where we can build that empathy for each other. And one last note, I promise, I'm working with the state police to help us make it easier to report incidents of bias or violence, that they know where to report it, because if you don't report it, they can't help us. So just wanted to, once I get that information, if I can just pass it on to Counselor Diaz and get that message in Lancaster City, I would be super grateful, and that we can help push back the hate together. Again, thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Representative Kim, for your time.
Thank you very much, Representative Kim. Counselor Diaz, yes.
I have one more person, if it's, if I may.
Of course.
I also have Sarah from F&amp;M College that would like to enlighten us with some of the issues that they had in, in the campus and just speak on it as well. Sarah, there you are. Hi, Sarah.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me join the meeting. Should I start talking?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you all so much. I'm excited to be here tonight, and thank you very much to Counselor Diaz for bringing me in and allowing me to, to read over the resolution before the meeting. I did just want to say that, I mean, I'm sure we all, we all already know, and it's already been said, but the U.S. has a really long history of anti-Asian racism and discrimination at a cultural, social, and legislative level. Some of the racist laws that come to my mind at first are the 1875 Page Act, which prevented Chinese women from immigrating to the U.S., and the 1882 Chinese Exclusion Act, which banned Chinese immigrants in general for 10 years and prevented existing Chinese immigrants at the time from gaining U.S. citizenship. So as we all know, the historical anti-Chinese laws reflect deeply ingrained xenophobia, xenophobia, and racism within American culture and the government. And with COVID, we've seen a drastic uptick in the violent hate crimes against Asians in this country. And I'm sure many of us had already heard our previous President Trump intentionally used racist language like "Kong flu virus" in order to blame and vilify in order to blame and vilify China as a country and Asians in general for the pandemic. And we also have seen a lot of media coverage about recent hate crimes against Asians, such as the shooting on March 16th that targeted Asian women working at a spa and the elderly Asian man who was attacked in Oakland also in early March. The hate crimes that the media have been highlighting are not the exception, and there are a lot more that go unreported, like Patty Kim had mentioned when she was speaking. And according to Stop AAPI Hate, there were almost 3,800 racist incidents that were reported between March 19th, 2020, and February 28th, 2021. But as we all know, there are so many more that people never talk about. So a lot of members of my community and Asian communities in general in the country suffer from racism and harassment and violence in silence, and they oftentimes don't have the resources or the community support in order to get the help that they need. It's really critical that we, as a community, provide material and legislative support to Asians in our community and across the country as well. So I do want to thank you all for the resolution that you are voting on tonight. Sorry, there was just a loud motorcycle that drove by. In terms of Franklin and Marshall College, I'm a recent graduate. Oh, I just realized, I never introduced myself. I'm very sorry about that. I was just nervous and I jumped right in. But my name is Sarah Yi. I usually her pronouns, and I am from the class of 2020 at FNM, and I work there now as a staff member. Franklin and Marshall College is blessed to have a really strong Asian American population on campus and also an international Asian population on campus. And we have a lot of great multicultural clubs, such as Asian American Alliance and the Asian Cultural Society, who do a lot to provide a safe and welcoming and productive environment for Asian students. So I did, I was wondering, is it okay if I ask a question about the resolution? Okay.
Yes, that's just fine.
Okay, perfect. The question that I had about the resolution was, because I had the opportunity to read it beforehand, I thought that the writing was great and it looks really great. My question was whether the resolution later on, whether there would be concrete action steps that are added to it. So that way, there's a clear plan for how the
I'm sorry, Ms. Yi, I've lost the last 30 seconds to the internet.
Um, I'm not sure where I got cut off. My internet is very bad. But the question I had was, I had the opportunity to read over the resolution beforehand, and I thought that the writing was great and and like, it's very clear that the council wants to take a clear stand against anti-Asian racism. So I just wanted to ask whether in the future, there would be concrete action steps or a clear plan? So that way, there are like clear goals and steps to achieve those goals for the city.
That's an excellent point, Ms. Yi. I would encourage you and Counselor Diaz, who is Chair of our Personnel Committee and oversees things just like this for the body of council to come together and suggest some steps that not only council can council can take, but also we can encourage encourage the administration and the City's Human Relation Commission and New Advocacy Council to take in that direction. I think you're right, that it's important that we have concrete action steps.
And if I may, President.
Of course.
I also am part of the PHC of the state, which is the Human Relations. So we, and I think Representative Patty Kim has spoken. So if you want to connect with me, you can speak with Tamika, who's the Director of the Human Relations in the state, and we can move forward with some actions then.
Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate you letting me have the chance to speak.
Thank you. All right. Are there other council comments on the matter?
President, Council President?
Of course.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up regarding the action steps. I think you're spot on. I'm really excited about the new Advocacy Council with the Human Relations Commission here in the city. And we're talking about, you know, under our purview of the city, that's really going to be the place to go for any sort of advocacy outreach, information and resources for these types of incidents. And so I would encourage anyone, Sarah, or anyone who has ideas about ways that we can take further action in the city to connect with the Lancaster City Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Counselor Bakay. It is crucial, as Representative Kim mentioned, to recognize the significant contribution of Asian Americans of multiple ethnicities and nationalities to the history of the city of Lancaster, but also to our current thriving in in any arena, public health, business, social service. The South Asian American, the South Asian Alliance of Lancaster comes to mind and their efforts to vaccinate tens of thousands of Lancastrians. And of course, it's important to recognize these contributions. But it's also important to say that somebody's safety from hate and incidence of biased violence shouldn't be correlated with or based on their contributions to a given community. They are human beings and are the targets of specific hate and deserve specific protection, especially at a time when national rhetoric is being weaponized against Asian American communities. So thank you to Sarah Yi, thank you to Representative Patty Kim, and thank you to Counselor Diaz. With that, having a motion and a second, I would like to call the vote. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you all very much again. All right, that, I believe, concludes the committee of the whole. So we will move then to the Community Planning Committee. Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. We have two items on the agenda this evening. One being the review of the Historical Commission Recommendation of Denial for 437 West Grant Street. And I don't see if they're Suzanne Stallings. Yes, she is. Thank you. Hi, Suzanne.
Hi, good evening. For Amber, for your information, we also have Steve Funk, who will be representing the Historical Commission. And then the applicant, the project architect is Peter Carrick-Giardo, and the owner is Benuel Esch.
Okay.
Just to set up for council, the proposal was to enlarge an existing brick warehouse by adding a two-story addition to a two-story warehouse in order to convert it to condominium use. It was originally presented in a conceptual discussion to the commission at the February meeting, got mixed reviews. They submitted a formal application at the March meeting, and during that time, they also presented different iterations, trying to respond to the commission's comments. They ended up withdrawing that application because it was unclear exactly what they were asking the commission to act on. They came back again with a formal application in April, and that's where the vote occurred, that it was to recommend denial on the grounds that for a two-story building, the addition was too large and would be overwhelming the historic warehouse to which it should remain subordinate and thereby altering the character of the warehouse. It was, it would also clearly be visible from, certainly by pedestrians coming from various directions, both for the addition itself and then the addition of three circulation towers. And that preservation of the south-facing facade alone was not preserving the overall massing and character of the building.
Thank you, Suzanne. Let's speak with one of the other folks that are on, Steve. Mr. Funk.
Okay. Suzanne summarized what happened in pretty great detail, so there's not a whole lot more for me to say. As she pointed out, this came before the Historical Commission first in February as a conceptual discussion. And some of the, some of the the words that were used by commission members to describe the proposal were overwhelming. Let me see some of the other ones. Overwhelming, overpowering, smothering, a disservice to the historic building. So it was pretty clear from the very beginning that the size of the addition was a problem. We also discussed other details about materials and size of window openings and the applicants, you know, did make some some refinements to the design when they came back in March. And again, as Suzanne said, you know, there were, there were two or three versions that we were asked to look at, and the applicant wasn't clear on which one that they wanted to move forward with, so they withdrew it and and reapplied or resubmitted in April. And each time they came back to it, you know, there was an improvement. The design was more refined, the material selections were better, the window treatment was better. But the overarching issue of the size of the addition just really wasn't addressed. And ultimately, the Historical Commission agreed, and Suzanne, I don't remember if it was a unanimous vote or or not. But there was, there was a clear plurality that the Historical Commission felt that the the overall size of the addition was the problem and that it was inappropriate for a building of this scale.
The vote to deny was six to one with just the real estate broker voting against the motion.
Okay. And his, if I remember correctly, his position was that there's a, there's a market for condominiums in the city, and that was more important than any other issue.
Well, but I would also hope he was, he based it on your standards, and his feeling was that the addition would be appropriate to this building in order to allow a new usage.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The builder. I'm looking on my screen. I can't find you.
Okay. This is Benuel Esch. You should be seeing me on there somewhere. I think Peter's going to go first here in a minute. Yeah. Yeah, so I'm going to let Peter go first, and then I'll chime in with some of my thoughts later on in the call.
Good evening, Peter Carrick-Giardo, Beers &amp; Hoffman Architects. Is it okay to share my screen at this time?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do a brief overview to provide some context. The property in question is 437 West Grant Street. Everybody see my screen now?
Okay.
And so it's located in R4 District, within the Heritage Conservation District, of course. And the building currently two-story construction with a basement below that looks like this. It was built in 1895 as a tobacco warehouse. It was individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1990. And our proposed design would be to add a two-story addition for residential use, seven units in total, condominiums with parking on the lower level below. In addition to the two-story addition, there would be required stair tower and elevator. Our additions would enlarge the footprint, the existing footprint is roughly 4,000 square feet. So as I mentioned, we would end up with parking on the lower level, four levels of residential use, as well as rooftop access. The scale of the building itself is within zoning requirements, aside from a variance was obtained earlier in the year for the stair and elevator towers, which were, I believe, four to six feet above the maximum zoning height in the area. But aside from that, the proposed scale and the size of the building is within zoning requirements, as well as the multifamily housing special exception was also obtained from a zoning perspective. So we are certainly not here to contest the judgment of the Historical Commission relative to the Secretary of Interior Standards. However, we ask for your consideration to approve the project when taking into account some additional context and other variables in the surrounding areas outside of the lens of those specific standards. So to illustrate that, I'd like to share respective images. This is at the, in the east on Grant Street, looking to the west. And these are the existing conditions of the southern facade on Grant Street. And the next image here is showing the proposed building. So although it is much larger in scale, we tried to select colors and materials that were very inconspicuous from most perspectives, while preserving the actual existing southern facade of the building. We were very intentional, strategic in trying to preserve the the components that truly have architectural value and significance. And as we move further up the street, this is now from the west, looking back at the building, again, existing conditions. And this is the proposed addition. I should mention, the addition of the two stories is set back eight feet or full structural bay from the southern facade, which is what achieves the somewhat separated, isolated perspective from the east side. Now, recognizing, of course, from the west, it certainly is not necessarily to the same scale and compatible to the historic building's size. However, I would argue that we were successful in making an effort to still retain and reveal that original structure. So you are still shown that the true dimensions and proportions of that original building. Some window fenestration is added throughout, of course, and it is concealed in some areas, but the basic structure is still preserved. And this slide was put together to more or less illustrate that what I considered the element of character and value, the southern facade on the streetscape, that framed view there is really left uninterrupted. In fact, it's just the frame to the western side that is affected. And quite honestly, in my opinion, although it is a larger scale, it's an improvement upon what is there, which is frankly, a two-story brick wall. The building, as I mentioned, is owned for R4. From what I understand, that is very difficult for business use. I know there's some special exceptions designed within R4, but that's typically a corner building. And this site also has some difficult parking restrictions that limit any functionality. Parking seat to the west is actually a neighbor's property. So we're able to achieve residential parking requirements within other uses for that reason, I believe, would be difficult. So all that said, I think our design here strikes an appropriate balance between preservation and progress and improvement for the built environment in that area. Benuel, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things I'd like to add to that. One is that so during the conversation with the Historic Board previously, one item that seemed to sway that decision pretty significantly was the height and not just for the reason of smothering the building, but a comment was made that seemed largely agreed upon that there's nothing of this height in that neighborhood and that is simply inaccurate. And I spent some time over the last couple of days just looking around at other buildings in that neighborhood that are, you know, of that height or higher. There's, so the new fire hall, which is directly in front of it, is, would just be a few feet lower than our finished product here. And there's various other buildings in the neighborhood that, I mean, I have a list that I could go through, but I don't know that that's worthy of our time right now. But I just wanted to point out that was, that seemed to be a major element that was considered. And I just think that we were unprepared to, I wasn't prepared for that to come up at, at that meeting at all. We just want to make the point that, you know, I think for the scale of the neighborhood, this height would be appropriate. I understand that there's still the argument that it, you know, overpowers the existing building, if you want to use that wording, although I don't necessarily disagree with that, don't necessarily agree with that statement either. But that, so that was fair to point out. And then the other, you know, thing that we've been asked the question of, well, could you take top story off? Are there other uses that are viable for this building? We've looked at a few different ones, but that top floor is a huge part of what makes this an economically viable project. And you know, going lower than that is, it would, I think it would be difficult for anyone to make that work, so. Yeah, that would be my take. I'll put that up for comments.
All right, thank you. Um, if you could stop sharing your screen, we could open this up for conversation.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Are there comments from the committee?
I have a question, Counselor Craig, if I may.
Absolutely, go ahead.
So just confirming, the first floor, the intention of that is to just be parking within the actual structure?
That's correct. It's essentially a basement. The existing basement level would be parking for the residents.
Gotcha. And what are the proposed number of units that are supposed to be in this building?
Seven total.
Seven, so, and these will all be condos, so these would be sold for homeowners? And what would, what is the target sales price for each of these condos?
Yeah, so I'll jump in on that. Yeah, so the, so there's, there'd be six floor condos and then a larger fourth floor condo that would have an entire floor. So the targeted price for the lower ones is somewhere between four and 500,000. The upper condo, around a million.
Thank you. And then my last question maybe for Ms. Stallings or Mr. Funk. As far as like the height of the building, how much lower is it? Or maybe not, but has the Historical Commission or has the Commission made a recommendation of how much lower the building needs to come down? Is it a full floor is the recommendation?
Oh, Steve might be able to address that. They weren't looking at height in terms of numbers, but just in relation to the existing building. So a taller building could support, you know, a taller addition, but on this, really a two-story building, it really had to be kept low.
Yeah, I think we all, I think we were pretty much in agreement that taking one story off would be, you know, we, we would look at the application much more favorably if they, if they dropped it one story and they were only adding one story to the building rather than two, which basically doubled the size and doubled the volume of the building. And in Suzanne's review, she referenced Preservation, Preservation Brief Number 14 from the National Park Service, which I'll, I'll quote just very, very briefly. It says, generally, a rooftop addition should not be more than one story in height to minimize its visibility and its impact on the proportions and profile of the historic building. I think we were all pretty clear in our, in our review and comments that two stories was just too much. And then if it were a larger building, two stories might be appropriate because this, but because this is a fairly small building to begin with, one, one story was, was much, one story addition would be much more appropriate. And if I may share my screen, I'd like to just counter something that Mr. Ash said about the building not being not being feasible to develop if they couldn't add the, the stories. May I share my screen?
Absolutely, please do, Mr. Funk.
Okay. Let me see if I can find it, okay. Okay. This is something that Suzanne pulled together. This is an example of, you know, there are literally dozens of examples within the city of Lancaster of projects of historic tobacco warehouses or industrial buildings that have been rehabilitated with little or, you know, with small additions or no additions. And they, there are many different uses. This is a multifamily housing. This one on North Shippen Street is a condominium. I believe that's just a single family home. We have businesses, again, multifamily. There are lots of examples. This one is, was, I believe is apartments. And the addition, addition of an additional story was added, you know, by, by just adding dormers. So they were able to maintain the primary roof line of the building and still gain additional living space. You know, there, there are plenty of examples of successful financially feasible projects that have been accomplished in the city. Here's one that's under construction right now. You can see that there, there, I'm assuming this is a new stair tower. But other than that, they've again maintained the the integrity of the building by, by maintaining its, for the most part, maintaining its mass. So I, I would, I don't believe that this building cannot be rehabbed without two stories. I mean, it, it can very easily and feasibly done with just, you know, with six units rather than seven. So without, I will.
I could make, make one, one point in relation to that. Those are very good examples and one, one difference about the site we're looking at here, not relative to height and number of stories so much, but the last image reminded me with the stair tower being added there, Steve. Parking requirements in this specific case really result in need for the exterior additions. So regardless of the height and number of stories being added, added, I feel that we are, it's inevitable that we will need to have stair and elevators added to the building in order to achieve the required parking in the basement level. And again, that is zoning requirement to have that parking for the residential units.
I'm sorry.
Challenge there.
Repeat that, please.
For residential use, we're required to have a parking space for each unit. There's not enough space on the perimeter around the building because the property on, is essentially at the the building on three sides. So therefore, that, that requires parking within the basement. And to introduce a stair or elevator inside the existing shell of the building would eliminate the ability for vehicles to circulate down in the basement level. So this, side note to keep as a frame of reference that we weren't solely doing the additions of the stair towers in order, in an effort to maximize usable square footage on the interior. It was more of a logistical approach and requirement really to achieve the parking that's required.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Funk, that your images were, were quite helpful. Are there any other questions from the committee? No?
The only comment that I have is, I agree with all the remarks. I think this was one of the more detailed kind of responses that we've gotten from reports from the Commission. The other thing too is, as we see development happening in the city, I think what we have here is us making an exception for at most seven families at a very high end level. So that's something that I personally just don't believe that that is the intention that we should have as counsel at the moment either.
May I ask a question, Counselor Craig?
Yes, please.
Hey, Peter.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. The parking that is adjacent to the building, is that parking, that parking lane available to the resident? Is that owned by, is that part of this parcel?
No, that's actually a separate property and it, it, I believe is, will be used by the adjacent business on the east side of this building. Is that correct, Benuel?
Yes, it is.
I think Mayor froze. Is that, was that it, Mayor?
I think she froze too.
I think she froze. Okay, give it a second. You may not be done. Okay. Are, are there any further questions from council as a whole?
Counselor Craig, I do have a, have a couple of questions. Um, so I want to thank Suzanne for her staff report because it was very helpful and very detailed. And I want to clarify because it hasn't come up in this conversation yet. This building is on the National Register of Historic Places, is that correct?
That's correct, it's individually listed.
Great. And perhaps Mr. Ash could answer this. How is the building being used right now?
It's currently, yeah, it's currently a vacant warehouse. It's not being used for anything at this point.
Okay. And then my last question, has anyone sought or considered seeking a parking variance for this purpose?
The short answer to that is no, I'm not sure if I understand the nature of your question though. You're saying for different uses other than residential?
Um, just, just a general variance on the requirement. So, you know, there, there's an opportunity to ask for a variance on parking for different uses. So I just wondered if anyone had considered or sought one yet? Because you mentioned the parking requirement.
There were a couple of technicalities that we, I believe we discussed with with zoning back when we were going through that process, but there was, there was nothing major sought, no.
Okay. All right.
For the most part, this, this entire project as we were viewing it was by right short of meeting the standards that the Historical Commission has set, but so we've, we've tried to color within those lines as much as we could.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Greg King.
If, if I may just add a comment. I understand, you know, with, with properties or, you know, dwelling units of this price point, onsite parking is very important. But having done multifamily projects, you know, historic rehab projects in, in several different cities around the area, it's very common to, if you're not able to lease, or if you're not able to provide parking onsite, that you can basically get around the zoning requirement by leasing space in nearby lots. There's, there are often surface parking lots within neighborhoods where spaces can be rented. I understand that's not ideal for this kind of dwelling unit. But it is an option that, that should be looked into.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Counselor Soto, I see that you want to say something, but I see here that the mayor is back. So if you can give me a minute, she froze on us and I want to make sure she got her thought complete.
I apologize, I'm not sure what happened there. So on the matter of parking, I just wanted to clarify about the adjacent parking. And I understand that that is not, that is not owned by the property owner in this instance. I also just want to say that we too have spent a lot of time in this neighborhood as part of the planning related to the fire station. And I will say that parking is extraordinarily challenged in this area. And while there is a surface lot one block up, it is, it is for a funeral home. And so there, there really aren't other surface parking lots. And the, the one across the street sort of down a little bit is used by multiple businesses already. So I'm just, you know, for context, this is a really tight area. And we spent a lot of time just with our own plans for the fire station accommodating our employees and their ability to, to park in the back. So that, so that's just context. The other thing that I want to say is that I, I do understand, and, and Counselor Garcia Molina, this is really just in, in response to, to your comments. I, I want to, I want to acknowledge and, and, and echo your appreciation for the detailed nature of the remarks from the Historical Commission, which is particularly helpful as counsel considers the application that is before you. At the same time, I want to just contextualize that this is about the Historical Commission and the recommendations from the Historical Commission itself. And there really should not be a discussion about affordability as it relates to, to this conversation. Although I understand and hear what your concerns are. I will also say that we are in a, in a state of housing cost where four to $500,000 and, and one unit at a, at a price point that's closer to a million dollars is the, is by far the exception and not the rule in terms of the, the kinds of development that we're seeing. And I'd also say that for those seven units on a, in a highly dense area of the city is adding value to the city taxpayers by alleviating the pressure on other property owners around that development. This is just to provide a different perspective. It is not to, it is again, just to provide a different perspective as you take up this, this issue before you and consider and reflect on this as it comes to May 11. And again, I appreciate the input of Suzanne and members of the Historical Commission as well. I'll also just say, I'm really happy to be having this conversation and not a conversation about, hey, we want to tear the building down. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Soto?
I think my questions were already answered, but the comment I wanted to make. And I know this has to do with the Historical Commission report advice that we should be following through. But doesn't that price tag that we're talking about now piece out the neighborhood as far as homeowners are concerned? And that's where my mind is going as I look forward to the next phase, whether this vote goes one way or the other. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Soto. Counselor Diaz?
Mr. Funk, I have a, probably a bizarre question. But it's in reference to the structure. Like for example, you're putting something new and something historical that's brick. I really value brick for some reason and stone, the old, it just looks nice, especially in Lancaster. If they were to build on top of it and it was done by, it was done in brick, something that would accommodate or look like the old building. Is that something that you would maybe agree on or not agree on? I'm just, I'm just kind of, my brain is just going, you know, trying to figure the, you know, the, the the historical keeping that value in that building and, and so forth.
Actually, building the addition out of brick and trying to match the existing building is counter to the Secretary of Interior Standards because it could confuse the history of the building. It's, it's more important that the, the new material of the addition be compatible with the, with the building, but not try to mimic the materials of the existing building. So I would say that, that building two, two stories on top of the existing building of brick would, would be the wrong thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Funk.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from council as a whole? No? Okay, are there questions from the public? Thanks, Amber. Tony is there?
Hello.
Hello, Tony Dastre, 700 block of New Holland Avenue. Thank you. So my question is related to the fact that this is a condo building, I suppose. I'm concerned that the divvying up of a building into the se- I don't know how the management of a condo building works. I do understand some of the finances behind it. Uh, I'm wondering what sort of maintenance will be done to the property in the long run, once it's divvied up amongst several property owners in a condo format? But in addition to that, uh, I see the building, it appears to be purchased for a million dollars back in 2020. Um, so I can understand why the price points are getting so high. Uh, especially as the cost of construction is rising and the building already was arguably an expensive purchase. Unfortunately, rehabbing old units or old construction like this is one of the most affordable ways for us to develop new housing in this current, uh, situation. So with buildings like the Press Building, uh, in the north of town, with condo units still available and they'll, uh, I think I just looked up online, low three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, one question is, why do you feel this building will compete with that as opposed to making those other units more appealing and marketable? Because they would be then viewed at a lower price rate? Uh, two, I would like to know what kind of returns you're expecting on the property based off these price points? Uh, and three, again, the maintenance and overall maintaining of the building. I would prefer to see, I, I think I would prefer to see something like this managed by somebody and rented out as opposed to sold off in pieces as a condo to ensure that there is an entity maintaining the structure in the long run. I'm not so opposed to height, I'm a density guy, I love density, but, uh, destroying the historic nature of the building for seven units priced between four hundred and a hundred, that will, up to a million dollars just does not seem worth it and I have concerns as a community member.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that we need to hear from?
Tim.
That is Tim.
I did.
Hi Faith, um, Tim Stulder, uh, 800 block of George Street. Uh, and, uh, editor of One United Lancaster. Um, so I have a question for Suzanne and then I have a question for the developers. A question for Suzanne is just, could she say a little bit more about the building's historical designation? And why it has that designation? Um, is there anything distinctive about it other than that it's a traditional tobacco warehouse, uh, in the, uh, in the city? So, and then my question for the developers would be, um, you know, lot of conversation this evening around parking. If the, if somehow the parking were to be solved, um, and would free up, I guess, the first floor, um, would that potentially enable um, the project to be reconfigured? Uh, would that then solve the problem of using, uh, being able to do this with, uh, one added story instead of two added stories?
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yeah, um, in terms of the building itself, um, yeah, there's nothing exceptional or unique about it and that's what made it listable, that it's, um, it's so representative and reflects an industry that was very important in Lancaster in the 19th century, the storing of tobacco, whereas the farmland grew it and we stored it and processed it. Um, it's also listed in 1990, um, 30 years ago, before we had a, a Conservation District. So the listing in and of itself didn't protect the building, but it was both an, a federal honor recognizing that, I mean, other cities would be, would kill to have the number of historic tobacco warehouses we have and that are, have been saved. But it also would have, um, um, offered ta- historic tax credits for anybody who did want to uh, reuse or rehab the building. And the photos that Steve showed, C. Funk showed, a lot of those were historic tax credit projects and they were held to certain standards, which is why there's not a whole lot of alteration to the exterior. But it allowed adaptive reuse and in some cases residential use. I'm also mentioning that it was historic warehouses that was sort of the catalyst for the creation of the Conservation District to begin with. And that they, they are a valuable resource, but a finite one and we lost an important one right at the corner of Prince and Lemon, where now we have a one-story CVS and a parking lot. So I think we always have to pay close attention to historic warehouses, tobacco warehouses.
Thank you. And now we're, we'll hear from the developers on the question Mr. Schuler asked.
In response to the question about parking, uh, parking offsite somewhere else would, would not necessarily be related to the height uh, or number of stories, but would alleviate the need to have the stair towers and elevator on the exterior as an addition.
If I could follow up then, um, what would then be the use of the first floor in that scenario?
Honestly, we had not given that much consideration of storage and, and mechanical system. There, there will be mechanical systems regardless, but storage might be a possibility.
Okay. So the project as you guys are conceiving it is this, uh, two added stories?
Correct.
Yeah, and it's worth adding to that too, I think. Uh, it would be extremely difficult to make the basement a viable living space just because most of, most of it is set below grade. So to get any kind of natural light in there would be, uh, difficult at best.
Right. Masonry walls and, and the majority of it is below grade, so it really would not be suitable for any type of business or residential function.
Thank you. Is that it for you, Tim?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, questions from the public? I don't see anyone. Okay. Seeing no one, um, no further questions from the public. I am going to make a motion that we move this to May 11th council meeting for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys are jumping around the screen, my eyes are going crazy. Yeah, one minute you're one place and the next you're someplace else. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Good evening.
Um, the next item we have on the agenda is the balcony, Resolution 2721. Balcony, balcony easement for Landis Place on King. Hi Douglas.
Hi, good evening, counselors. Good evening, Mayor. Um, I believe there are some other, um, members from the development team here as well. I see Ed Kaminsky and Benjamin Morton. And maybe they can tell us if there's any, anyone else that needs to be brought into the room. Um, while they are joining us, I'll just give you a little bit of brief background, but I suspect, um, Ben Morton will be able to walk you through this in a little bit more detail if you require, um, uh, some diagrams. Um, so Landis Place on King is the, uh, project that you've seen now several times and, um, multiple ways, um, on West King Street. Um, kind of across from McDonald's and, uh, McDonald's and it's an age-restricted community of about 82 units. And, uh, there are balconies proposed on the backside of the building along West Grant Street. And they, uh, on the upper floors, um, I believe floors four through six, uh, there are projections over the public right-of-way. Um, the ways that we, this has been handled in the past by our city solicitor is to bring these uh, developments to city council to provide an easement over our public right-of-way to the developer. Um, this has been done in several other places, um, throughout the city, one notable project being the Press, uh, the Press Building at, uh, Prince and Lemon. And there are balconies in that project that do, um, uh, extend over, uh, part of the right-of-way. I'm happy to discuss this more, but, uh, the, the project is proceeding through land development approval. Uh, we do anticipate, um, this before the Planning Commission on Wednesday of this week. Um, for, uh, a conditional approval consideration by the Planning Commission. Um, and with that, I, um, will hand it over to, um, the Landis team.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kaminsky, Kaminsky.
Well, thank you all, uh, for having us, uh, here to present this. Um, we, uh, do have balconies on all of the units in the building, uh, with the exception of uh, two floors on Grant Street where the utility, uh, wires are just too close and for safety reasons. Uh, we have, um, taken the, um, balconies extending into the right-of-way, uh, away. Um, that would be the second and third floor. So yes, we do, uh, have balconies on four through six. Um, and, uh, we do seek your approval to allow those.
Anybody want to add to that?
Ben, did I cover everything or is there any technical piece that I left out?
No, I think that, uh, summarizes it well. Um, maybe we can just add that the lowest point of the balconies is about thirty-three and a half feet above the uh, level of the street, uh, providing ample clearance for large vehicles, um, using the street.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the committee? Do we have any questions from the public?
Counselor Craig, if I may.
As a whole, I'm sorry, let's do that.
That's okay. I just want to get clarification because we're talking about stories four through six and the resolution for easement states three through six. So I just want to clarify what floors get the balconies, um, and make sure that that height was correct. Uh, I also have a question about how deep the balconies are.
I'm going to defer to Ben, uh, our expert in these matters.
Sure. So the, the projection of the balconies is, sorry, here, just making sure I get the exact right number. It's just under four feet, it's, um, about three feet and ten and a half inches is the projection over the property line. And and Ed, I do have as the latest information from the architect that it's levels four to six.
Thank you for checking on that.
We can certainly amend the resolution and I, I do just want to note there are a couple of other, um, minor, uh, things that need to be amended in the resolution. Um, the first, whereas does say south side of West King, it should be north side of West King. Um, and West Grant Street is hyphenated. Aside from that, uh, and the balcony, uh, levels, I think, um, the resolution is in good order otherwise.
Great. Thank you, um, Douglas, and thank you Counselor Ray King for catching that, I sure didn't. Um, are there any other questions from council as a whole? No? How about count questions from the public? I'm seeing none. Okay. I make a motion that we move this to, uh, full council on the 11th. All those in favor?
Aye. Second.
Yeah, there are now those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Council President, that's all we have on our agenda this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. All right, um, public safety, Counselor Garcia Molina.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on tonight's agenda, we have one item, it's Administration Bill Number 122021, amending the civil service ordinance, which I'm actually really interested to have this conversation. Um, I believe Chief Little is leading this conversation and Mayor?
Okay, there's Chief Little. Um, so I'm gonna take a step back and just provide, uh, a little bit of broader context, um, as it relates, uh, to civil service in general. Uh, which is that we are, uh, working to align our civil service regs between, uh, both, uh, public safety bureaus, fire and police. And there are a number of, uh, changes that are being proposed as part of the civil service regulations. Um, that I believe are really focused on, uh, elevating individuals, um, as part of the civil service, uh, process that are going to best exemplify the, um, values and priorities of the city of Lancaster. And I am, uh, very, this is very much in keeping with our, uh, focus on, um, our core values as I mentioned, but also the fact that we want to excel in our, our work as it relates, uh, to public safety, uh, both in fire and police. And we want to have the most qualified and best individuals both joining us as, uh, new hires, but also those that are getting promoted through the ranks. And the process, uh, includes both oral and, and a written exam. Uh, there's, uh, some things that are being added in the police department that didn't, that didn't count, uh, as far as points-based before, that will be counted now. For example, uh, there will be an oral exam that will count as part of, uh, their overall score, not just a written test, so that oral exam will happen sooner. And that will, if you pass the oral exam, then we will move you in through the background process. Whereas before we did backgrounds on a lot of people, uh, and then, uh, we're, we're interviewing them and that also did not necessarily count, that oral interview didn't count towards their total score. So this is a process, uh, that actually Chief Little and the Fire Bureau are already doing. And now we are, uh, aligning the Police Bureau to operate in a similar fashion. That, that's a very broad level overview of some of the changes that are included, uh, in this ordinance. I'm having to answer any other specific questions and, and now I would like, uh, Chief Little to add, um, whatever else I'm missing.
Sure, Mayor, thanks. Good evening, Council. A little bit about the Fire Bureau and the process for when we discussed seniority points. Uh, we also feel, you know, we have minimum years of service requirements to begin with when you take your promotional exams. So within the Fire Bureau, you have to have five years on as a city, uh, employee and staff member to sit for the test of lieutenant. And then if you get promoted, then you have two years' time in grade minimum before you can test for captain. And then so on, so another two years and you can be in the battalion chief. But we also feel, you know, having that minimum, uh, standard there at that five-year mark, you know, we're giving everybody that equal opportunity and fairness and access to prepare and, and that professional growth. So in addition, you have the inclusion, which is ensuring that we as the leaders are engaged with our team and committed to their continuous improvement for their professional, uh, growth for all. And not just few. So we're definitely pushing that out to all of our members, uh, throughout. But then there's also that, that continuous goal for our members that ensures that they are given every tool to have an, an appropriate mix of experience, education and training. Uh, in particular, talking about the Fire Bureau, Bureau, you know, today's fire service profession requires us all to be adept and be well-rounded. And we cannot just focus on one area of concentration, we have to have that appropriate mix. And we think this is a, a fair ordinance, uh, for your approval in May.
And I would just add to this and, and we've been having some discussions, obviously internally, uh, and specific to the seniority, and this is really the change of the ordinance. So when I was, uh, talking about, uh, the civil service regulations, uh, that are being changed within the Police Bureau, it's not that the regulations are changed, it's that we are going to be following those regulations. Uh, this ordinance that's before you tonight is specific to the seniority points. And it's important to have that total context just for, for, for a public safety committee and full council to understand the bigger picture of what we're trying to do in aligning, uh, the process for both to understand the bigger picture of what we're trying to do in aligning the process for both police and fire. But I'm also really mindful that seniority does not necessarily reflect job performance. And we, again, want to be promoting the very best individuals. And because those individuals have to be in in a particular position for a certain amount of time, even before they can sit for the promotional exam, it is affording an opportunity for those folks who who may have gone and above the very minimum requirements or have met and exceeded those requirements, demonstrating leadership and and really working to advance the work of either the Police Bureau or the Fire Bureau. And so we want to really, we want to support, encourage those individuals who to to exceed the expectations at some level to to be considered in the top three for promotional and to not add these additional points, seniority points, levels of the playing field from my vantage point. And so this is the ordinance that's being brought to you for consideration.
I appreciate that context. I also really appreciate the intentionality behind wanting to essentially provide opportunities for a culture shift within a department as people are in there for career mindset, right? But I also imagine that there is some hesitations within the department internally with those that are senior level. Have you had a chance, Chief, to speak internally? Like, what is the sentiment amongst those that are at the senior level? And then I guess my follow-up would probably for Patrick. Have we had conversations with the union reps about this?
So Scott's gonna join in and talk about the Fire Bureau, but what I can say from the command staff at the Police Bureau, this was, there is a, there is, as you have pointed out, Counselor Garcia Molina, a mixed review and response within the Police Bureau, and I would say that that's the same within the Fire Bureau. There are individual members who are okay with these changes, this change in particular. And there are those that are concerned that we are devaluing experience within the police and fire bureaus. I don't know if there's more that you want to add, Chief.
Or yeah, I did do a meet and discuss with our local 319. Obviously, they do have some concerns about losing their seniority points. And, you know, in particular, if you have like twenty or twenty-five years of service, they believe they're losing out on that potential benefit. I also tried to explain to them, when you have a staff member of twenty or twenty-five years and you're competing for lieutenant with somebody who has five years on the on the Fire Force, you have twenty or twenty-five years, additional years here, working for the city to be able to explain what you have done and how you have made your career the way it is. So I believe it's an equal playing field across the board. So, but we did have the conversation and, you know, we don't have to agree on the process. But I think if you really peel that onion back and you look at it, I think there's merit in that, being here for twenty, twenty-five years and be able to speak to that. Everybody is equal.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the committee?
I don't have a question, and that was my question. So it's answered. Thank you.
Counselor Garcia Molina.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just a question that I have generally. Are we required, I noticed that when we get civil service items on the agenda, we typically get them for police and fire service at the same time. Are we required by law to have the same, say, civil service point process for both the police department and the fire department and the Fire Bureau? Police Bureau and Fire Bureau, my apologies.
Patrick.
I'm not sure that we're necessarily required to have the exact same provisions for both police and fire, but we do have one civil service commission. And so, you know, there's oversight by by one body. There used to be separate, there used to be a separate police civil service commission or board and a and a fire civil service board. They were combined by state law, I don't know, five, six, eight years ago, something like that. And as the mayor said, this is really having one set of requirements provides some consistency across the city and really does align the, well, I guess, Counselor Garcia Molina, you talk about culture within the department, and it really is aligning, you know, the desire to have equity across the 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 Public Safety Department, made up of police and fire, and have the same basic rules in place for both hiring and promotion. And both of those are ways to, you know, to inculcate the the culture change that we want to have within both, in both bureaus.
Any other questions from council as a whole?
Yes, Counselor Molina. My question is, we're looking at two different departments, and I understand that it's under safety, but it's completely two entities. And according to, let me see if I can pull that up. We have section sixty-seven dash five, which is very different than forty-two dash seven. So I'm just not understanding why we would have to make such a change between the two. Now, obviously, we do want to make changes with diversity and so forth, but in reference to some of the senior people that have been there for such a long time that have the experience in the Fire Department, I just feel like it's, for me, I'm just looking at it as being unfair.
I'm not sure who wants to answer that. And if I'm if I'm getting the gist of your question, Counselor Diaz, it's really about do we need to equate these two bureaus because they are so different in terms of the public safety that they provide to the city? Is that the gist of your, okay. So I would say, yes, that is true in terms of the day-to-day functions, but the because they operate under civil service, both entities operate under the civil service provisions. And they both have an onboarding process that is similar in terms of hiring, recruiting, hiring, and and the civil service process to become a firefighter or a police officer in the city of Lancaster, as well as the process for promotions. They, that is the the recognized methodology that we have to work with. And the change that we're bringing to council for consideration has to do with one element of that, which has to do with a seniority points. And again, I just want to underscore that, in my view, it is those individuals who have that experience, A, first, can sit for a test, for a promotional test, and B, have the benefit of that experience that they can bring to that promotional testing. At the same time, we, as a community, are looking to elevate the very best into leadership positions because these are the folks that are making the day-to-day decisions that are, in essence, protecting the lives and property, especially in relation to the Fire Bureau, for city residents. And I believe that city residents and and also internally, the folks who work within the departments, should, we should have a high bar and extra seniority points. And in my view, and I understand that this is controversial, in my view, are are not, do not level the playing field to make sure that we're elevating that best person who's already meeting a minimum number of, minimum standard for the number of years served to even sit for the test in the first place.
Is that something that the union have in their contract?
Patrick, you want to speak to that?
No, the provisions, any of the provisions related to the hiring process and the promotional process are solely governed by the civil service requirements that are in the city code and then the Civil Service Commission. I'm blanking on the term. It's not the code, but the civil service regulations.
And is those regulations also statewide? Are they the same or are they different?
There are standard provisions that have to be in place statewide, and then there are local variations. You know, for instance, the additional points that are given for city residency and second language proficiency are ones that we have locally that aren't necessarily mandated statewide.
I believe the Union President is in the room as well, Counselor Diaz.
Would you be kind to get him into us?
Andrew, can you bring him in, please?
Thanks.
Sorry, is that Jeff Stone?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. How you doing?
Good are you? I'm sure you listened to our conversation and we're.
For some reason, they haven't been, I'm new, Jeff Stone with the Local 319 president. I had a conversation with President Wade L earlier. I look forward to having some conversations with all of yous here in the upcoming weeks. But I'll go over some of the issues that we have from our standpoint. I discussed this with the chief and the mayor already, but I will talk to you guys also. As far as local 319 members are concerned, we're a little caught off guard by this, to be honest with you. To to us, there's, there's, they're saying there's a problem, which we don't see there being a problem because the, under this administration, we have promoted eight to twelve people. And for you to say that seniority points, you're not getting the best person, would be to say that you did not promote the best person to me. So we also feel that this is a benefit that should be bargained with the union. It's it's been here thirty to forty years. So we are willing to come to the table to talk about the promotional process and to, you know, we know there's issues with it, but we feel that we should be involved and not, you know, necessarily unilaterally change without having us in the process. So that, I mean, that's where we stand on that.
Thank you.
And ninety percent of the members do feel this way.
We really appreciate that. Does anyone?
Oh, sorry.
I will also say, like, every other city around York, Carisburg, everybody gives seniority points. There's not, it's nothing that's out in left field.
So I guess I have to ask, I know you mentioned, what am I trying to say here? I know you mentioned Chief Little, that this was discussed with the the department. Can you talk a little bit about what that that timeline is like? So if like, if it was discussed with the department, but the the union body feels caught off guard by it, how did we, how did we arrive? How did we arrive at this point? Can you contextualize that a little bit from your perspective, Chief?
Or yeah, actually, when we talk like meet and discuss on policies, ordinance changes, it is myself and the Union President, which is firefighter Stone here this evening. So we did have that meet and discuss where we speak. I don't speak on those issues to the whole body because that's, you know, between management and labor and and for firefighter Stone to push it out to his members.
I see.
I mean, a lot of the members have felt that you are discounting time spent in the city, time learning the residents. So I mean, they have expressed their concern to me.
President Whitehead, is there a possibility to table this just until maybe Chief Little and Stone, who the firemen and their members? I just feel, when you get somebody off guard, it doesn't, it doesn't resonate, it doesn't, it doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it feel right. And I think if we're a community that we're supposed to be protecting all of our workers and everyone in that particular room, then I really feel that they should discuss it and not push this agenda further until we can get some kind of resolution or some agreement. I mean, that's, that's my perspective.
Counselor Diaz, I appreciate the the spirit of what you've said. I actually, I was just asking a question of Chief Little, but I actually do not have the floor right now. And so actually, I would hand it back to Counselor Garcia Molina.
No, but I also agree with you, Counselor Diaz. I think that this is something, both in the conversation we've been having about looking at the potential to both have this be separated within the police department and the fire department, and also wanting to ensure that Fireman Stone, as well as the rest of the department, is able to feel caught up in the conversation and also for us to have a conversation. I would love Fireman Stone for us to have a conversation as well individually to see if we can get to some form of resolution. Vote on this just because we want to act on your best interest, but also acknowledging that the intentionality behind this is something that I fully support. But we wanted to go about this in the best way possible. So I would personally move to table this. But Council President, this is where I ask for your counsel. Is this best tabled for the following month's committee or timeframe-wise? What do you think?
Well, if you would like to table it as a committee item to be discussed at another committee meeting, then you would table it to the next committee meeting. And then that would, that that tabling would occur within your committee. If you move it forward to full council where all of council has the opportunity to input, of course, there's the possibility of tabling it from there to the next meeting of of council. Now, that's just, that's in generalities. It is an ordinance, so it does have to have a first reading and then a final vote. You could ostensibly table it, table the first or act to move the first reading to, say, the second meeting, but it would put it out of order with how we do first readings and and final votes. So if you're looking for more committee-level discussion, I'd say you're talking about tabling it to the next committee meeting. If you're looking to have it discussed at council, then you're moving it forward to council and then, you know, providing an opportunity for it to be discussed, tabled, et cetera, et cetera, of there once we have the opportunity to vote on it. Does that all make sense? That was a lot.
It makes sense. And then also, for context, firefighter Stone, in terms of time, so you don't feel that you're being caught off guard and that your team isn't feeling caught off guard, would you feel that by the end of the month, the next, like, if we were to table this discussion until the twenty-fifth, that the twenty-fifth would be a date where you would feel more prepared to have this discussion and have relayed that information to your team?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the date again, Counselor Garcia?
Looking to table this for first reading on the twenty-fifth.
So Counselor Garcia Molina, it's my understanding, and forgive me for taking the floor without your permission, it's my understanding that you would actually not table it until the twenty-fifth. Like, if you were looking for the second council meeting, you would vote to move it forward to that meeting, which again would put it out of order with our typical schedule, but I believe is within the power of the committee as legislators. I think, my internet's very bad. I think I saw Mr. Harris moving toward the camera, so his counsel may be valuable here.
All right. Give us a thought.
I will. I would say that it's perfectly acceptable, Counselor Garcia Molina, we did move to have this on the council agenda on the.
on the council agenda on the, at the meeting on the 25th.
Perfect. Thank you. I also did not provide an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. Is there any questions from the public?
And while we give. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Bakay.
I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to ask one question and it may not be information that you have this evening, so it may inform later discussion. But I'm wondering in general, how frequently, and, and this is me not knowing, you know, the accumulation of points in these civil service exams, how frequently does five points, is that the differentiating factor for promotion? And then that's to anybody.
Counselor, yeah, over the last two, I guess, two promotion rounds since 2018, five points is a lot because everybody's probably within a, a one to three point ratio where they're at on the scoring.
Okay, thank you. That, that provides the context I need.
Can I, can I add something to that? I, I hear, I hear the, the talk about the five points being huge, but I mean, the city always has the option of taking three people because we have skipped people in the past. So I don't understand why we need another tool in that.
And, and I'll just reiterate that we are really looking for this to be consistent between the police and the fire bureau. And I'm, I don't support having this for one and not the other or vice versa. It either remains or it does not remain.
Understood. Any other questions? Okay, so then I move to move Bill number 12, 2021 to council meeting on the 25th.
Back in.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
My committee meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia Molina. I believe that moves us, I'm sorry, yes?
I was just thinking before I left.
Oh, okay. That brings us to the Public Works Committee. Counselor Soto.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I will bring the Public Works Committee to order. We have one item on the agenda, Administration Resolution Number 28, 2021, the secret grant from the State's Greenway Trails and Recreation Program. Is Mr. Campbell in the room?
I am.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much for, for having me and for allowing me to present very, very briefly what's going on with this particular request. So I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'd like to share my screen briefly.
Please.
This is the right one. Do you see a map of Long's Park?
Yes.
So this is, this is a grant request. This is a request to seek funding from the Commonwealth Finance Authority for edu-, basically for educational and, and enhancement purposes related to walkways, park access trails, pedestrian bridges and boardwalks, so that the public can better appreciate some of the reparative and some of the environmental aspects that are being dealt with in the northern quadrant of Long's Park. Looking at this, at this particular map, this is Long's Park. The entrance that we usually use is here, the secondary entrance is here, and at the far northern section, basically the intersection of the railroad track and Route 30 is an area where some stormwater management, best management practices will be put in place. This is a fully funded project of approximately $1.1 million, which will be installing proposed pipe, proposed pump stations, et cetera, which helps to manage some of the water that, stormwater that arrives in the park, partly at the edges of the park, but also partly from Park City. The water quality improvement project conceptual public access component is to be able to make this area as park-like and as pedestrian friendly as possible. So that particular segment shows an area that, that would be not only a pond perimeter trail, but an area with, with pedestrian bridges, a place where one could experience the four bays, which is how the stormwater gets managed in a relatively natural setting, access trails around this particular area, two pedestrian bridges and two boardwalks so that you could actually experience some of that green infrastructure by walking over it. For those of you who may or may not be familiar with this particular edge of the park, this particular border is the elevated Route 30. So it's, at this particular moment, it's a large green field that has a few trees in it and a little bit of roadway and parking. This is the Kimball, I think. Hill Deer Drive is this particular section here. So the intention is for this to be significantly enhanced and for there to be, as I mentioned, boat parking access trails, floating wetland island for the four bay, pedestrian bridges, boardwalks and a stream trail, making it much more user friendly. A huge part, an educational component of this is to have a series of signs and signage that graphically and verbally explains how this type of green infrastructure actually operates. As many of you know, the city of Lancaster is at the forefront of the utilization of green infrastructure to manage much of the stormwater that enters into the Susquehanna and Conestoga watersheds. This particular stretch manages water from this part of the city, including Park City, into the Little Conestoga, which going back to the Long's Park plan, goes through the pond and then heads out to the Little Conestoga off to the lower left. Part of what the green infrastructure is managing is the excessive algae blooms, what we call eutrophic conditions, where there's an excess of foliage, et cetera, that is eating up the, the oxygen that allows for healthy water, water placement. And therefore, Long's Pond will become a healthier pond by, by implementing some of this green infrastructure and the water that goes from Long's Park, Long's Pond out to the Little Conestoga will be that much better. So this is a graphic representation and a living representation of how we utilize green infrastructure throughout the city. This is a large version of what you often see on places like Charlotte Street, Mulberry Street, et cetera, but this is in a, in a much more, much larger setting. The cost of this particular intervention, including all of the bridges, et cetera, that we're talking about, is, is approximately $250,000 over and above the 1.1 that we currently have to be building infrastructure. The Commonwealth Financing Authority often has something called Greenways, Trails and Recreation Program Grant, which allows for this educational enhancement and for people to appreciate the natural setting as well as the learn about how it's working and what is happening. So our goal is for us to be making that, getting that funding. We are certainly eligible for that funding. There is an application process, but the goal would be for the mayor to be the designated official to execute all such documents as we've done many times in the past for all kinds of similar grants.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I do have a question for you, maybe a few, but I'll start with mine. The natural spring that used to feed the park coming close to the Route 30, is that still active?
To be perfectly honest, I'm not 100% sure. The discussions that I've been in indicate that it is, but I think it has been impaired. I do, but to be perfectly honest, I do not know if the plan for the execution of the new infrastructure solves for that impairment or just allows the spring to come in a different location.
Okay. And looking at the map you have on the screen, you have the property to the, I guess, to the south. Right, yes, right there. I see a fence line and I see the natural streams that eventually cross, cross over into the park access behind the fence line there. Correct?
So the, the fence line is pretty much in this area here.
Okay.
So the, the Long's Pond affluent goes internal to, to Long's Park and then under, under Harrisburg.
Oh, okay.
There is a connection. There's a proposed pump station and a Donnelly Southwest Pond that is connected to this water system. And we are working with the, the organization to the south so that it is a coordinated stormwater management effort at this entire, this whole area here.
And, and the reason I ask that, because I know they have a pond on their property. You know, if history, if history has anything to say, how, how contaminated or uncontaminated is that pond right now? Is there any way of knowing?
There is a way of knowing. My understanding is because we and our consultants are working closely with them, the intention is for all boats to be raised by this kind of an effort. So even though we are not paying for their part of that infrastructure, we are partly paying for this proposed pipe as well as co-paying for the proposed pump station at the Donnelly Pond.
Okay, okay. That answers all my questions. Is there any other questions from the, from the committee?
May I, Counselor Soto?
Yes, you may.
I'm very happy that we will be able to pursue this because I know that there's a lot of issues when it has to do with flooding in Park City, which sometimes just, you know, especially in the summer, the humidity and all the insects that, that come with it. So I just want to thank everybody about working to get this redesigned, so we don't have any more issues with flooding. So thank you, Mr. Campbell.
And I thank you for that as well. Part of the solution is, in fact, so that the water will be moving more swiftly, which will hopefully reduce the mosquitoes, reduce the standing water and also increase the aeration or the, the level of oxygen in the water.
And that is one thing that I am extremely happy and glad that the filter system they're going to be putting in is going to clear up that pond. But also you're bringing less contaminants into the park from the adjacent properties. I'll leave it at that.
Less, not only less contaminations into the park, a greater, more natural way of, of filtering that water so that we are actually putting cleaner water back into the Little Conestoga as well.
Now, there's no matching grant with this. Am I correct, Mr. Campbell?
As I understand it, not for the, not for the Greenways, Trails and Recreation Program. Their primary mission is to provide opportunities for education enhancement and access to the, to the green infrastructure and these natural systems. I believe though, and Patrick, please correct me if I'm wrong, that much of the funding, the grant funding that we got in order to do the primary infrastructure of the primary stormwater best management practices or BMPs, that in many cases had matching funds attached to them. The 1.1 million.
Yes, I, I think that's right because I think that was primarily DCNR grant funding that did have some level of match requirement and, and I, but I don't think it was consistent match requirement, you know, percentage wise across the various grants that we, that we had.
That's correct. As I, as I have it from, from Ms. Blackman, we have approximately 400,000 in grant funding that has a match and then there's an additional 48,000 in grant funding from the PA Fish and Boat Commission. So it's a mixture of funding sources, of many of which have grants, which brought us all the way up to the 1.1 million for that project.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any other questions from the committee as a whole? Do we have any questions from the public on this particular item? Anything, Amber?
Yeah, I just added Tony.
I guess I am anything. Hello.
Hello, Tony.
Tony Dastra. 700 block of New Holland Avenue. I think the project's great. My only question is actually related to the pedestrian walkway that I think's in the northern quadrant of the park as well. Are we going to be preserving that connection under the highway to Park City?
Yes, we will.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? From the public?
Nope, nothing, anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Could you please unshare the screen?
Yes.
At this time, I'll contain a motion to move this forward to full council on the 11th.
Our motion?
Our second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And that concludes Public Works Committee, Council President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Soto.
Before I go, I just want to say, Mr. Campbell, thank you for your expertise and your knowledge that helps answers my questions because sometimes I get lost. I thank you for that.
Well, I will tell you that much of this expertise is from my staff. I had to ask these questions and more in order to get to this point. Thank you.
But we did it as a team though. Thank you very much. That's all, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Soto. All right, that brings us to Finance Committee. Counselor Bakay.
Thank you very much, Council President. The Finance Committee has one item on the agenda this evening and it's a presentation from Patrick Hopkins, giving us the preliminary financial results for 2020. Mr. Hopkins.
Thanks, Counselor Bakay. You will, especially given the hour, be very pleased to know that this will probably be the shortest financial presentation that I ever give to you. It is a mere seven slides, one of which is the title slide. So what I would like to do is just sort of walk you through at very high level what our preliminary 2020 financial results are. I'm going to focus mostly on the general fund, but also have some slides on the, the enterprise funds, water, sewer, stormwater and solid waste, excuse me, solid waste and recycling. And the reason I have preliminary on here, obviously our audit is not yet completed. The fieldwork started about two weeks ago, I believe. That fieldwork will go on. I would expect that we will have draft audit sometime in June, maybe early July. You're used to having a schedule where we have somebody from Mayor Dusel come in and do a council presentation of the audit sometime in August and I would expect that we're on that same schedule for this year. And, and I say that on that same schedule, after an absolutely extraordinary year and with the start of Onwin, who is our new Deputy Director of Finance, there frankly is no good time to start in a role like that because we're either in budget season or in audit season. And as soon as we're out of one, we're back into the next one. So Vaughn and her team have been doing just a really great job. One, sort of getting up to speed for Vaughn in learning all of the various aspects of an audit. It is a great way to learn the finances of the city to go through an audit. So she is, she's sort of trial by fire right now and, and, you know, relying a lot on her staff to bring her up to speed on various aspects of the audit requirements. So with that said, let me jump into this again at a, at a high level. This first slide here is just giving you the, the very brief overview of what happened in 2020 with the budget on the left and then our preliminary actual numbers on the right. We had a, an adopted budget in 2020 that had nearly a $3 million use of reserves or deficit built into the budget. We typically have a deficit built into the budget and over, as you all know, over the last several years, have been able to convert those deficits into small or medium sized surpluses through a number of different measures. have been able to convert those deficits into uh small or medium sized uh surpluses through a number of different measures. 2020, as I don't even need to get into it, was an extraordinary year for all sorts of reasons. Um in April and May of of 2020, uh we came to you and and started talking about some of the forecasts based on um what were then, you know, sort of really dire predictions about what was going to happen in the economy, what the employment rate was going to look like. And what we had anticipated for some really significant revenue losses uh during the year. So uh as you can see here, we had that $3 million deficit built into the budget. We're actually uh preliminary actual numbers show that we're going to be under $150,000 deficit or use of reserves, which is especially in 2020, just extraordinary to me. Uh the reason for uh that variance is, one, we had significantly lower COVID impact than originally forecast. And we talked about this sort of throughout the year uh during 2020 and even during the uh 2020 budget. Uh 2021 budget presentation that we I was still sort of waiting for the other shoe to drop, especially on things like earned income tax revenues. And that just didn't happen. Um real estate transfer taxes and building permit revenues were actually over budget. Uh you all have seen what's going on in the real estate market in the city, both in terms of volume of sales and also the the price of sales and both uh you know, commercial and residential properties. And then uh building permits, which basically tanked in April and May, uh just had a big turnaround from June on through the end of the year. Uh and then, of course, we got the uh allocation uh thanks to the county commissioners of $815,000 from the CARES Act funding that the county received. And that made a huge difference uh in being able to reduce that that use of reserves. And then on the expense side of things, uh you know, we did a lot of work uh throughout every department to uh one, we had furloughs. Uh as you know, we had about 10 to 12% of our uh full-time staff. Uh and and including some part-time staff were were subject to furloughs during the year. We had a hiring freeze for a good chunk of the year and then we also had our regular vacancies. Uh so and I, you know, I I want to emphasize uh or or talk a little bit about the furloughs. You know, while that was a significant money saver during the year, um it was also a huge lift. One, obviously, the impact on the individual employees who were furloughed, there's there's a serious impact on those individuals. Even though uh you know, we we did a lot of work to try to reduce the impact as much as possible. Getting furloughed is still a very, very difficult thing to go through. On the operational side of things, it also meant that we were trying to respond to, you know, a global pandemic. Continue to provide services and do it with fewer staff on board. So um I want to really thank you know, the department directors, every bureau chief, every supervisor, every manager, and really every employee who stepped up during that period of time. Uh when we had reduced staff and and really more requests for services coming in than than in a normal year. So everybody really did a fantastic job and it made a big difference on the financial end and also on the operational end. And then uh you know, projects on hold. Just there, while there was a lot done during 2020, there were a lot of things that were also planned to be done during 2020 that just had to be uh pushed off into uh really into this year. Um the best example of that that I can uh talk about is the comprehensive plan. There was a uh $200,000 line item in the Community Development uh and Community Planning and Economic Development Department for the professional services related to kicking off the city's comprehensive plan. 2020 was not the year to kick off a comprehensive plan. Uh so that project was delayed. And at the same time, throughout that year, that delay was taken advantage of by the number of uh folks, the mayor and Chris uh Delfts and other staff within the city working to raise funds for uh you know, public support, uh private sector and public support of that comprehensive plan. And to date, I believe the the number raised is about $175,000. So we had a uh both a uh you know, a savings on the expense side, but also now a lot more uh additional financial support for the comprehensive plan going forward. This is a uh graphical representation of what I talked about uh a lot during 2020, which is the sort of big six uh real estate or I'm sorry, the big six revenue sources in the general fund. Uh these revenue sources in total are about 66% of general fund revenues. So uh that's why I refer to them as the big six. Uh the other third of revenues are uh probably another 60 or 70 individual line items together, but these six alone uh make up two thirds of the revenue. So as you can see, uh this goes from uh real estate, real estate transfer, earned income, local services taxes, building permits and parking violations. Um when we were at the beginning of the pandemic and looking at uh the economic impact. We were looking at 20 to 30% reductions in a number of these revenue sources. And as I said earlier, that really did not uh uh it just didn't happen during the year for a variety of different reasons. So real estate taxes, we were down only well, less than 1% versus the 2020 uh budget. And I think, though I can't pinpoint the number, the majority of that revenue loss was actually because uh you know, the administration and city council came together to extend the payment discount period, the 2% discount that taxpayers get uh when they pay early. And in this case, we extended that out several months. And then we eliminated the penalty period. So there's typically a 10% penalty for late later payment later payment later in the year of real estate taxes. And we eliminated that uh penalty period. So I think that that actually is a uh the majority of the revenue loss there was because of those extensions. Um we didn't really turn over that much more in delinquent real estate taxes for collection than we do in a in a normal year, which is pretty amazing. Um real estate transfer taxes, as I said, we were actually above uh or higher than budget in 2020. The uh biggest reason for that variance is actually um a property that uh Steve Campbell showed on his slide. Uh LSC Communications, which has three locations in the city. Uh that company sold uh again for the second time in three years. And so we had about $180,000 real estate transfer tax uh revenue that came to the city in early December. So that was completely unanticipated, both during the year, but also even during uh during the budget process that we were going through. So that was a, you know, if if LSC and Park City could sell every uh few years, we'd have a a nice revenue source coming in, but we can't exactly depend on those types of sales. Uh and then earned income taxes, this is one where fully expected a a significant drop off and didn't see it. Uh we only lost uh about 2% versus the budget, so about $138,000. Uh local services taxes were off more, uh almost 11%, uh but in in a dollar amount, not that much more than earned income taxes because it's a it's a much smaller revenue source, typically about 1.7 million in local services taxes versus uh close to $7 million in earned in earned income taxes. And uh the the information that we're getting from uh the Lancaster County Tax Collection Bureau, which collects EIT and LST for um for all municipalities and for school districts in the county. Uh really is that the differential there that we're seeing between those two collection rates is about uh similar across the county. And the reason for that is that the local services tax is a flat tax. Uh the city portion of that is uh $47 of the $52 tax, uh whereas the earned income tax is a percentage based tax. And the for the most part, uh the employees who were most affected by the pandemic economic shutdown were uh service employee workers uh who were at the lower end of the income scale in general. And uh that flack, that flat tax that they didn't pay uh makes up a larger proportion of the LST uh tax base than it does the the then the loss in the earned income taxes. And then on building permits, as I said, we're above budget there, uh almost 12%, uh about $63,000. Parking violations, for obvious reason, uh uh you know, street cleaning was shut down for three months. Meter enforcement was shut down for about three months. And so there was a big drop off there, about $282,000. But in total, these six revenue sources uh down only 1.27% versus our original sort of uh the sky is falling estimates of 20 or 30%. So um all in all, you know, while we had some uh numbers below the line there below zero, certainly much better than we anticipated. And then uh onto the expense side, this is the uh is our the four expense categories, salaries, benefits, operating expenses and debt service. Um I talked about the, you know, the reason for uh a good chunk of the reduction in the deficit was related to uh salaries, furloughs, uh the freezing of vacancies and hiring freeze. Um about $1.4 million under budget in total in salaries and that cut across all departments. Uh but more in some departments than others, but but it certainly cut across all departments. Um on the benefit side, uh we were under budget just by about $27,000. Uh the reason for the mismatch there is that uh even for those employees who were furloughed, uh the decision was made to maintain their benefits. So that nobody who was furloughed uh had a loss of uh medical or other benefits that they uh that they have coming to them as a as a city employee. Um so we didn't have much of a savings there on the benefit side. Uh on operating expenses, this really goes to one, the thing that we see year in and year out, which is uh supervisors, managers, directors doing everything they can to hold operating expenses down during the year. But this also, the savings of almost $1.6 million also really reflects uh you know, those what I talked about earlier, the projects just being put on hold, things not being done during 2020. Um and then uh on the debt service side of things, you know, debt service is debt service. Uh we have a uh set schedule. So um you know, $2,000 saved there. That that didn't exactly change things, but uh when you add all that up uh under budget by uh just a little over $3 million, which uh again, in a in a really unprecedented year was a great way to turn out. So uh the combination of those uh revenue numbers that you saw earlier. Uh the CARES Act funding that we got via the county and then this really extraordinary uh reduction of budget expenses uh is what made the the huge difference in the general fund. Um and what this looks like when you look at, this is a uh a look at the general funds uh reserves that we have. Um you the and this goes back to 2008. So you see in this part of the chart, uh what happened with the Great Recession. Uh we were at about $13.2 million at the end of 2008. And by the end of 2011, after some just extraordinary revenue losses, um so some significant staff cuts and everything, we were down to $7.2 million reserve. And then over time, we've built that up uh until at the end of 2019, this is the audited number, we were at about $15.4 million. The green bar here is where we showed you we would be uh at the end of 2020, when we did the 2020 uh budget. So a use of reserves of almost $3 million, we would have been down uh you know, in the $12 million range. And then uh this bar is reflecting the adoption of the 2021 budget, which also included a $5 million uh use of reserves or deficit. So at the end of uh at the end of 2021, we were originally looking at being down to about $8 million, not too much over our low point back there in 2011. Instead, uh we are looking to end the year uh 2020 at about 15.2 or 15.3 million dollars. Uh and that reflects about a 25% reserve, which is a very strong reserve position to be in. It's one of the reasons that we uh maintain the A3 bond rating for booties. Um and so it's an important factor in in overall in the city's finances. And then um I have this, you know, still reflected, this uh 10.2, 10.3 million dollars still reflects what's actually in the 2021 budget, which is a $5 million hole. I can I'm not going to guarantee it because we had a pandemic last year that nobody predicted and who knows what's coming. But if all things play out the way that we expect, uh there is no way that we're going to have anywhere near a $5 million deficit during 2021. One thing is, we know that our revenues are going to be better than uh than we budgeted for because we budgeted those EIT and uh local services taxes and things like that to continue to basically have a a drop off that we were anticipating earlier in 2020. And now we know that that's not the case. Um the other part is that, you know, we are um you know, we're doing all of the normal things that we do during the year to hold down operating expenses. Uh maintain our uh our uh salary expenses overall. So uh you know, we are, I feel fairly confident that we're going to reduce that amount some uh a fair amount. And then uh actually, in a couple of months, we'll be coming to you with a discussion of another refinancing and restructuring that's actually going to allow us to save some additional dollars, both in 2021 and also in 2022. So more to come on that factor or on that issue, but I just wanted to sort of give you that that picture of what the general fund reserves look like after a much better than expected 2020. And then uh the last two slides here are just on the uh what are, I'm sorry, on the enterprise funds. So on the left-hand side, uh sewer funds, uh we had a uh a balanced uh sewer fund budget in 2020 that we adopted uh that you adopted. Uh our preliminary actual number comes in at about a $1.1 million surplus. Um our revenues were actually down uh a combination of um both demand in terms of water or I'm sorry, sewer rates and sewer revenues are based on water demand for the most part. Um and in terms of the residential customers, we really didn't see uh uh any kind of a big uptick in demand. At the same time, we also have a fair amount of delinquencies uh that were, you know, due to the economy and also due to the fact that we uh have continued to have, you know, we had a moratorium that we established actually before the PUC established it. A moratorium on service terminations and we've actually continued that uh into 2021, though the PUC lifted its moratorium. Uh and we're working on uh you know, carefully with uh the county uh uh cap and some other agencies to make sure that our rate payers, both water and sewer, have access to uh the federal funds that are available to them for both uh rent relief, but also utility relief. Uh to make sure that, you know, our customers have access to those dollars. We've uh included a uh a mailer out uh in our water and sewer bills and are actually going to will be doing or have already done a separate mailing about uh that that program and funding availability. Um and then on the waterfront side of things, uh we uh there was, the budget was adopted with a $1.7 million use of reserves during the year, uh able to reduce that down to only $190,000. So uh good results both in water and sewer. And then finally, in uh solid waste and recycling and uh stormwater management. You see, stormwater management on the left had uh budgeted use of reserves of about 112,000 and we came in with a surplus of 320,000. And then in uh solid waste and recycling, uh use of reserves of about 355,000. And came in with a uh just a very small but um mighty surplus of about $14,500. And with that, that is the last of the slides that I have and I will uh turn it back over to councillor Bakay. And I I'll stop the share here, but I can pop back into this uh presentation if there are questions about it.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Patrick. I really appreciate that. Um you did hit a lot of the important things that I I'm glad that you did, especially regarding um the furloughed employees. It was a huge financial impact, but obviously um one that we don't take lightly. And uh we appreciate that we were able to maintain benefits for them. I think that's a really important point. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee regarding the presentation? Or other members of council?
Uh councillor Bakay, may I?
Please.
Thank you. Um no questions, just want to take a moment um to thank uh you, Mr. Hopkins and uh your team for for what you do to keep the financial uh the financial business of the city uh right side up. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And as Steve said, it's uh that there is a whole lot of staff that you never end up seeing is doing a ton of work and not, and this is really not just within admin services, though I want to give lots of credit to the accounting team, but really it is across the board in the city. The city leadership team supervisors, managers um just stepped up enormously during 2020 to uh you know, in a whole lot of aspects, but in terms of the city's financial picture. to uh, you know, in a whole lot of aspects, but in terms of the city's financial picture, um, you know, we I just can't say it enough how 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 pleased and pleasantly surprised I am that we ended up uh 2020 the way we did.
Certainly much better than expected. Um, seeing no other uh count comments from council, um, there's no nothing to take action on this evening. Um, so thank you, Mr. Hopkins, and that concludes uh the Finance Committee this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bakay. Uh, that leaves us only with the Clerk's report this evening. Mr. Harris.
It's Mr. President. Um, of course, I provided this report to you in writing, but I'll go over some of the highlights here. Uh, in writing, I I wrote the resolution for the uh the Asian American uh discrimination and violence that you reviewed earlier. Um, and I uh prepared the Fair Funding Resolution that you also have before you. I researched um actually quite a few requests for uh various documents over the course of the last month. The city code update, I um received copies of the city code, and the city code is now uh updated through March of this year online. Um, and mailed out copies of the updated forms, papers to be inserted in the book for our Magisterial District Justices. Still use paper for that. Um, updated the book that's in in my office, the uh the I think I think the single bound copy that's used within City Hall was Barry still using, I'm not sure. Statements of financial interest, I I continue to collect statements of financial interest in the recent weeks. Um, the deadline for that was May 1st. Uh, I have like 59 of those of the of the 71 uh for city employees. So it's, you know, it doesn't set the city employees that uh did not turn them in, but otherwise, you know, pretty strong showing for uh collecting those. Um, still might get some more from members of boards, commissions, and authorities. Those are sometimes collected by the staff and uh then sent to me. Um, attended the parking authority meeting, provided you with a summary of that. And did various other things, various other miscellaneous things, which again are all listed in that uh written report that I'd sent.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, we have no other uh business this evening, so I will hear a motion to adjourn.
So adjourned. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.